Can I welcome everybody to this meeting of the Cabinet of Warwickshire County Council on Thursday, the 8th of October. We will start, if I may, we will start by sparing a little bit of a moment, please, if I can. We've had some very sad news over the last 24 hours, which is the sad death of Lorna Dervix, wife of Neil Dervix, who is one of our friends and colleagues. This came as a great sadness to all of us, and not least to Neil, of course, and his family. And for all of that, it will be a difficult time for him. And I would ask that we spare just a moment's thought for Neil in this very difficult time. And if perhaps I could ask for a moment's silence, just to think about him, please. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for that. And I have written to Neil myself and Dave too. Thank you for letting me know, and Helen as well. I wonder if I might ask, have we any apologies that I have not been made aware of?
I'm not aware of any apologies, Chair.
Thank you, Paul. That's fine. And I wonder if anyone has any declarations of interest that they would like to register at this point, please. Now is your moment for hands up or chip in. And I see there is one. Who is that? Let me just get there. Sorry. That is Judy, Judy Falke.
Thank you. I may not be here for item 13, but if I am, I need to declare I'm a district and town councillor as well as county councillor.
Oh, I think that's fine. There are many as well, so that is fine. Thank you, Judy. I think I cannot see anybody else, but should anyone be registering their district? I don't believe that makes any difference at this point in time. Can I have any confirmation on that, Monica or Paul?
That's fine. It's not necessary.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we move on from declaration to the minutes of the last meeting, which were held on the 22nd of September. And I would just ask that, that can't be right. It wasn't the 22nd of September. That was full council, wasn't it? It was the week after that that we had cabinet meeting. Could I ask, please, if we can agree the minutes as printed, please? I'm asking for hands up in agreement of that, please. So, members of Cabinet, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. We have full agreement and that is unanimous. Thank you. You can now take your hands down. So the next item is public speaking. We have two public speakers with us today, and may I welcome you both. The first one is Mr Bob Reeve, and he is going to be speaking on item 2, which is on-street parking management changes. May I invite you, Mr Reeve, to address Cabinet?
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon. Rugby residents on the whole welcome the revised parking permit proposals as detailed in today's agenda, item 2, and wish to make the following observations or comments. Paragraph 1.5 states that the feedback analysis reflects bullet broad agreement with the move away from paper-based permitting to digital virtual permits and bullet point agreement to control visitor permit misuse through the introduction of online virtual permitting. We challenge the accuracy of these two statements as being broad agreement, bearing in mind that at paragraph 1.2, you state with a response rate of close to 15%, i.e. 85% of those contacted did not respond, there's no inference or of acceptance of the proposed changes is taken from this. Paragraph 2.3 states other civil parking enforcement income effectively subsidizes the permit scheme. We contend that parking permit schemes in rugby were introduced to force non-residents to utilize the pay and display car parks and parking meters in the town itself, and therefore the income generated from the parking meter charges, we believe, should be taken into account when analyzing the cost of parking permit schemes. Paragraph 2.4 states the proposed price rises should be considered, therefore against both local and national charges. And likewise, that para 210 states benchmarking with other local authorities. We question as to why should other national charges be considered, as this is not mandated in the government's guidance for local authorities on enforcing parking restrictions. In para 219, it states it's proposed to formally consult upon the introduction of the online digital permitting system, and the introduction would be from the start of the next financial year, 2122. Likewise, it's the same proposal for visitors' permits. We would like to know who will be consulted, and we question the timeframe in which this can be properly conducted if the proposal is to be implemented with effect from April of next year. Paragraph 225 states, we intend to address any concerns over ease of use with detailed communication before the new system goes live, and we will monitor usage of the online and phone system and review as necessary. We would like to know how you intend to provide detailed communication, how you intend to monitor usage, and how you intend to communicate the findings of any reviews should they happen. Paragraph 226 states, the current system of one visitor vehicle at a time will be reflected in the new online virtual permitting process. We seek confirmation that as per current practice in our neighbourhoods, as and when a resident is expecting more than one visitor, that they borrow a visitor's pass or passes from their neighbours. And we ask that this will be implemented using the online system, or clarification that it will. Paragraph 228 states, the registration of visitor's vehicle details will go a small way to reducing the misuse of visitors' permits. We question the validity of this statement. The online system will not prevent an unscrupulous resident from entering the VRN details of another person's vehicle to whom they currently are supposedly providing a visitor's permit to. The actions of an extremely small number of alleged offenders should not be used as a sledgehammer to crack a nut. Warwickshire County Council, in our view, in conjunction with NSL, should be taking proactive measures to identify and cancel any such permits. And finally, at paragraph 250, it discusses the proposal to create a cross-party working group. We request that if the cross-party working group is formed, that the Rugby Borough Council representative undertakes dialogue with representatives from our group, perhaps via Zoom online, in order that he or she can better represent rugby residents' views to the working group. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr Reeve, very much for your comments, which will then be commented on when the item comes forward. Okay. Thank you for that. We have one more speaker, and that is Mrs Michelle Condarco, and she is speaking on item 12, which is transforming Nuneaton highway improvements, and this is the SIF bid. I should have said at the start of public speaking that it is three minutes, and I will try to give you 30 seconds warning that you're coming to the end, Michelle. Thank you. Please do start.
What investment in the Newton is welcome. It needs to be wisely spent, and this scheme does not seem to be wisely spending it wisely. It's not a suitable project for the 21st century. It seems to go against a lot of policies, government policy of encouraging walking and cycling, the fact that you at Warwickshire County Council declared a climate change emergency, this local transport plan, research showing that more roads just equals more cars, more vehicles, and the requirement of developments for 15% modal shift, which is in the Newton Bedworth Borough Plan. I would love for some of you Cabinet members to actually cycle around Nuneaton and see what the problems are and things. This does not help cyclists. It does not help pedestrians. It just creates virtually a dual carriageway coming right close to the town centre. We are unfortunate that the Ring Road is right in the centre. It doesn't really go round the town as a whole. I'm Chair of the Newton Bedworth Cycle Forum. We've had no consultation whatsoever. Other things that I've picked out, it's a 60-year period that's used for the appraisal, and only then with a 2.5% modal shift, which seems absolutely ludicrous. How much has changed in the last 60 years and how much will change in the future? I think that's a ridiculously long period. The money should be better invested. Yes, we need some changes in the road layout and things, but good public transport would really help no end. It seems very perverse to be thinking about demolishing established businesses, both Donelm and the Empire Gym. Lot of businesses are struggling. These are two of the ones that are actually successful in the Newton and things. There are lots of empty other properties and things, so it seems that it's really a sledgehammer. And what research has been done to ask what the people of Nuneaton actually want? The main problem that anyone who regularly drives around the Newton Ring Road will tell you is the bottleneck is by Asda and the bus station and that roundabout there. And that is one of the few things on this scheme that isn't actually being touched. That will remain one lane each way, and it seems to be, you know...
30 seconds.
The objectives on your transport plan, you know, we'll talk about high-quality, well-connected walking and cycling routes with access to and within the Newton Town Centre. This does not provide that. It doesn't provide equality because it's only looking at really those people who are in cars. And the sustainable community strategy of the County Council, the first thing that's mentioned on table 2.1 is reduce dependency on the private car, and this just does not.
Thank you very much. That's great, and thank you for your comments. Again, that will be addressed when the agenda item comes forward. And I'd like to thank both our public speakers for attending today and for speaking to us and giving their views. It's most helpful. I also want to give notice that item 6 has been withdrawn for the moment. It has been deferred, and this is the education sufficiency annual update, so that will be coming back to Cabinet. And then, finally, there has been a rather late note that's gone out. So under item 13, there will be a new recommendation which has gone out, and that is an additional recommendation. And I think that will be addressed by the Cabinet portfolio holder when item 13 comes along. So those, I think, are all my notices in advance of moving to the agenda. So I'm now going to move us on to the first item, which is item 2, on-street parking management charges. May I invite you, Geoff, to speak to this item?
Thank you, Leader. Obviously, this has been going on for quite some while now. Members will recall that it started back in April 2019, and do appreciate the comments and feedback that we've had from across Warwickshire, not just rugby, but also Leamington, Warwick District, Stratford, and along with the businesses as well that have helped feed into this final document that we have before us today. And also should mention the district councils as well. I forgot to mention those. The analysis has been considered over a period of time, and we've had a working group working to, with members of the council, to bring this further paper forward today that we've got now. There was obviously a lot of disagreement around the proposed raise in permit costs, and those have been taken on board. I would say in relation to some response relating to permits and digital permits, we are looking at that, but there is an intention within government and a requirement for us to look to introduce electronic permits. However, that said, we would also be maintaining a phone service so that anyone who is unable to access the service digitally can still access the service as before, sort of thing. As I say, there's proposed, the new proposals, there's no increase in the charges for residents. The permits will stay at £25 per permit. We've only had one rise since the introduction in 2007, I think it was. It started at £15 and it went up to £25 in 2016. That's the only one rise that we've had. There will be also a small increase in pay and display charges to harmonize the charges across Warwickshire, because we're not required not to favour one town over the other. So there has to be some level of parking charges, on-street parking charges. We are returning to the linear parking charge that we had previously and which found a lot of favour. There may be a small increase in that to harmonize the levels, but that is the intention within the report that we return to the linear charge to ensure that it's equitable to all residents and up to all towns. The current guest house visitor parking will remain unchanged. With the other aspect to note within the report, parking dispensations and suspensions for businesses will be put on the same statutory footing in relation to the charges that are coming forward. There will be a short cross-party working group aiming to report by July 21. So I'm losing track of the years here. That will be established to consider a number of issues. The basis for any future permit rises, taking into account inflation and the administrative costs, the environmental aspects of parking, and including the emissions based on base charging, that will consider air quality issues in their internal areas, tourism and parking with the guest houses, as I've already mentioned, and parking on...
Oops.
...putting those places, and the potential for businesses, business permitting as well. So those are the areas that the cross-party working group will consider. As I say, we have seen freezes in relation to the charges for a number of years. However, the cost of administering the service is recognized to be about £64 per permit. So as you can see, the County Council, in relation to the issue of permits, do not make any substantial money on that. In actual fact, they lose money, which is then picked up in relation to the income with CPE that we have. The next steps, Leader, subject to the Cabinet's approval, we would need to vary the relevant TROs and advertise the pay and display parking rise, and that will begin once the Cabinet decides, if that's the case. Should any new charges come forward, that will likely be implemented early 2021. And along with the changes to the virtual permitting changes and the suspension of dispensations, would it be subject to statutory consultation? So those are the next parts. And also, as I say, the establishment of cross-party working group, which would help ensure that what we do delivers an equitable system across the county. Sorry, I didn't read out the recommendations, and perhaps I should have done because we're online and people...
Yeah, so, and they're quite long. So shall we pick up on a few questions first before we get to the detail on that, Geoff, unless you've got any more to add?
No more at this point. I'll listen to members and see what members have to say.
I have got four speakers at the moment. So could I invite Helen Adkins, Gerry Rudehouse, Alan Webb, and then Keith Condarco, please? Helen?
Thanks, Izzy. I have to say, excuse me, I have to say I agree with a lot of what the first speaker said, Mr Reeve. I think that this process has been rushed. It was rushed from the start. There was a lack of consultation then. I'm not sure the consultation process that's happened has made up for that. And, you know, there is a lack of response, as Mr Reeve said, and to base our decisions on that, I think is problematic. There's also perhaps not really a financial case for the rise in charges, and I'm wondering whether moving online, the system of moving online, actually may lead to more problems than we actually solve in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Gerry, Gerry Rudehouse, next.
Thanks. Not dissimilar comments, really, to what's been made. I suppose I'm seeking assurances from the portfolio holder and around consultation and working with groups in the particular towns and areas that are affected, which I think was the big missed trick, if you like, at the beginning of this whole episode. If there'd been more communication with the communities and some work with them, we probably would have saved ourselves a lot of time and probably quite a lot of officer money involved in this. But we are where we are. If we're genuine about a co-production of this, as it's called in the jargon, of trying to produce this and with the working group, I just want to seek those assurances that we will do that, and that these communities won't be sort of left out. And as usual, the portfolio holder could just direct the cross-party working group to ensure that they do engage fully with those groups and have those conversations on the ground. So when we start to see the reports coming back, we can actually see that reflected, we can see a true co-production way forward. I think everybody recognizes that things will have to change at some stage, but we can only do that, I think, by talking to people. And of course, the last point really is from when this all started. We're now going through this particular pandemic and hitting this second spike and the rest of it, so we'll be looking at next year sometime, possibly by the time we start to ease out that. That has hit a lot of people who are furloughed or either become unemployed or whatever. So the financial position now that is in those communities, and certainly the one I know in rugby, will be very different now to where it was when this all started, which we must be very mindful of that.
Yeah. Thank you. Gerry, Alan Webb next, and then Keith Condarco, and then Nicola Davis.
Thanks very much, Chairman. Yeah, I don't disagree with anything that any of the speakers have so far said. I have to start off, of course, by saying how I welcome the report because it was rushed, and it makes, well, it's eased a lot of people's concerns, I think, simply because we're not rushing to put the costs up. And a lot of the arguments put about that, I think, have been listened to, and I thank the portfolio holder and his team for that, and the officers. I would just like to raise a fairly important point, I like to think, which is that, of course, alongside this and the kind of coronavirus problem which is causing major effects, we are also looking forward to some form of local government reorganization. And that's an ongoing thing, and we have to wait and see what the white paper brings, et cetera, in terms of how that tends to go. But one of the things that that should do effectively is to bring services like parking services all under one roof. And if it does, it would be so much more welcome, Chairman, and I hope the portfolio holder agrees, to actually try and re-identify these as being a local service, because people are going to have difficulties with the online thing. That's clearly been said, and clearly the fact that you only got 85% response shows that of the remaining, sorry, 15% response shows that of the remaining 85%, some of them will have been simply because they weren't able to, because they can't deal with online, and that could actually exacerbate the problems quite a lot. So I would very much like to see a welcome, friendly service, rather than having a task force who come in who nobody knows, who actually just ticket and go, to actually have people that people are aware of, that they can talk to, they can get advice from, they can actually possibly even direct to the local authority, the local town hall, in the case of rugby, where they might be able to actually do what they need to have to do, assuming this change takes place. These are all sensible ideas, I like to think, and I would hope that that can be taken on board, if not immediately at the Cabinet, though I would like, welcome to words of reassurance from Geoff, but certainly by the member working group when it goes through it, to see how we can actually get this as a really welcome local service again. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Alan. I've got Keith Condarco, and then Nicola Davis, and then back to you, Geoff.
Thank you very much, Chair. One thing picking up from what Alan Webb said, I think the one front door is really useful for in terms of people go to their local council office to deal with this, rather than having to work out which of the two councils. The second thing is, it goes back to one unit, two or two, is actually the whole economy is different in the Newton to what it might be in Stratford and probably halfway in between in rugby. So I do think equitable isn't always equitable if people have less money in certain areas. So I think the ability to pay in some of these areas is a lot worse than some of the more affluent areas. So I think we do need to be mindful in setting charges of that. And the third point I want to make is the majority of the funding for this should come from people who don't obey the rules, not from the residents. So if people are going into an area where it's actually limited parking, if they're not obeying the rules, it should actually be mostly the people not obeying the rules are paying for the system via the ticketing, rather than the residents bearing the burden. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. Nicola, to you, Nicola Davis.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the portfolio holder and officers for the fact that they have listened to a number of the concerns that were raised, particularly in relation to the move to a wholly digital system, and I'm really pleased to see that there is acknowledgement that for some residents, a telephone-based system will be necessary. The main point I wanted to make was around the cross-party working group and the timeframe for that. My feeling is that it would be very helpful, and it would reach its maximum efficiency, if it either completed its work before the May elections, or if it actually commenced its work after those elections. I feel there's a risk of a real hiatus during April, where that focus and that attention that's needed could perhaps be slightly diminished. So that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
It's a point well made, Nicola. Thank you. And we do know that a lot of people will be otherwise occupied in April. So thank you for that. Geoff, back to you.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, a number of points there. Obviously, with the co-working, cross-party working group, sorry, I'm frogging me for it today, with the cross-party working group, we do intend to consult with all districts and boroughs as well as part of that. And we will also be sharing information in relation to the consultation, in relation to our communications with residents, residents groups. As I say, we have listened to what's been said insofar as we're able to do. That said, there is a need to do this cross-party working group, which will hopefully help iron out the additional difficulties that have been identified. I would say, I think we have to recognize that COVID, you know, Warwickshire County I would say, I think we have to recognise that Covid, you know, Warwickshire County Council has not been immune to the situation either. But we do recognise the need to ensure that we encourage business to come back into the towns. And we were able to do that by some of the actions we take around parking and how we manage the parking and the street management sort of thing, so that people can get in and out of the towns. As I say, we've lost significant amount of money there. In relation to not rushing it, I think, to be honest with you, we haven't rushed it. We listened to what the residents said back in 2019, April 2019. Yes, we've had Covid in the meantime, but we are still moving this forward and we have to move it forward because we have a duty to ensure that we maintain our highway networks to the most effective operations. Relating to equitable, yeah, as I say, we do try to be equitable wherever we work. And probably, I think, the fact that we have got one of the lowest parking charge permits across the region, as that's demonstrated in the paper, you know, demonstrates that that we are listening to residents, we try to work with the residents and we try to ensure that we deliver the best service possible for the residents. Listening to Nicola, yes, we have got elections next year, probably in May. The intention is that this will be a short cross-party working group. So hopefully, we could probably get it finished before May, not sure. So that the new council that can then come in and decide how to best implement the findings of the working group. And I think that's probably the best way forward because they then have the opportunity, a new council, to bring those decisions forward as is required. I think I've answered most of the questions I can there, Chair. If any member, I'm happy to move the recommendations as set out.
Those are set out on page 13. There are the four cabinet recommendations. I'm going to ask Cabinet if you would like to approve those four recommendations. So if you want to approve them, would you put your hand up now? And I'll come to others afterwards. Two, three, four, five, six. That, Geoff, that is unanimous.
Thank you, Nicola.
That is a unanimous approval. So thank you very much and thank you to our members as well. Can I move us on to item three, which is, you can put your hands down now, Cabinet members. Then we move on to item three, which is the local transport plan refresh. And again, Geoff, this is you.
Yes, this is something that's come about, as members will appreciate. When we first did the local transport plan, which was published in 2011, the expected, the intended life expectancy of that plan was 15 years, which would have took us to 2026, at the end of 2026. However, as I say, the world has changed significantly in that time, both in relation to developments across all of our districts and boroughs, which means that the LTP is no longer relevant for Warwickshire County Council's purposes. Therefore, this paper, in actual fact, Leader, is to begin the process of refreshing the local transport plan, taking account that the previous Department for Transport guidance has changed and that the LTP has been, the recommendation's been withdrawn and allowing for some potential changes to the format of the document, which, you know, has been somewhat constraining to us over the last few years. So this will give us an opportunity to refresh that. In the proposal, it is to begin the bottom-up process of devising the direction for the next local transport plan. Again, we will be forming a member group to feed into that process, again, including all districts and boroughs, to ensure that there is opportunity for everyone to have an input and to develop issues and opportunities in discussion with those stakeholders. We will also develop public consultation material, which we're for approval by the Strategic Director for Communities in consultation with myself or the Transport and Planning Portfolio at the time, and to consult publicly on the issue and opportunities arising surrounding the transport paper that comes forward. In relation to the next steps, do you want me to pause there, Leader, or wait for some questions?
I haven't got any. I think if you keep going and we'll pick up on the questions after you've presented.
I mean, subject to the Cabinet's approval and the request to party leaders for a cross-party working group, we would contact the external partners and stakeholders to begin those discussions and to refine the issues and options put forward for the consultation, which I think is essential to give some sort of guidance as to what we're enabled to do. There would be a preparation of the consultation material for the approval and release for members and the public to be able to see, and also an analysis and consultation of the consultation responses, which will take place during the pre-election period again, and then reported to Cabinet following the 2021 elections. I'll leave it there, Chair, if it, Leader, and take questions and try and respond as appropriate.
Fine, I have got some speakers. Now, thank you, all of you who have turned your cameras off when you're not speaking. If you could make sure you do do that, that would be really helpful. I have got four speakers at the moment. Please put your camera on when you do speak and then turn it off afterwards. So Jonathan Shilvers, Keith Condecor, Heather Tims, Helen Atkins and Gerry Rudehouse. Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to welcome the fact that we've finally got a timescale in, I think, one of the appendix, appendices that I saw. And this is kind of a plea to say, please, please, can we actually try and keep to it? My concern is that we seem to be going at a very slow pace on what is actually a very important document. As Count Clark said, the LTP3 is woefully in need of refresh. And I know we've had Covid and I know that the government have been putting out a lot of stuff on transport over the summer. But I just think it's really important that we keep the pace up. And so, you know, in terms of the working groups and stuff, let's keep them short and to the point and do what they need to do. And so we get a document that we so badly need to kind of plan the next 10 or 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Keith, you're next.
Thank you very much. It'd be good to have a short document, but the other thing we need to do is make sure it's used. LPT3 has been mostly ignored by our transport planners. When they do a plan, and even for developers, it hasn't been the first thing that people have grabbed. It's a big document and so making sure that actually they have to learn by heart before they're allowed to plan a transport project would be good. A little green book for transport or something we should have. And it's really, really important that we actually put in the railway ambitions we have, the cycling ambitions, but also underneath it have local plans. I was quite keen, like Warwick was doing some local transport plans for its town centres, and have those as separate things that can come up and be a live document. So this transport plan will set the high-level things and the county-wide structures, but not go down to the where we're going to move a little set of traffic lights or something, the detail. But I do think we need to take on board the massive change that's happened in the last year. The government or Department of Transport's released new cycle guidance, which radically changed how we do cycle routes. All the silly little things are starting to be swept away and we can have decent cycle superhighways. So that needs to be reflected in our transport plan and codified. So it happens when we do a project. And looking later on the agenda, we have a typical example of something that hasn't taken on board. All the latest government ideas on cycling, hasn't taken on board the climate change. There's a whole lot of issues which, if we had a good transport plan and made it happen, that would be really good. Because then when we get an item like item 12, we can say, here's our plan. Paragraph policy four, you haven't complied. And that's why it needs to be short, it needs to be clear, but it needs to be ambitious. We've got a climate change emergency, so it needs to actually say, we will do big changes. And the thing later on says two and a half percent modal shift, we should be going for 80% modal shift. Real radical stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Heather, you're next. Heather Tims.
Thank you, Chair. Really welcome this local transport plan refresh as the climate change champion for Warwickshire. We certainly, all the groups that I chair across the county, local districts and boroughs, we all get together. And one of the big things that is about decarbonising our county is around transport. And I know they're looking forward to taking part in this consultation. And it's great to see the timescales in there for being able to achieve this. Of course, the area plans will sit under that and look forward to being able to develop those with each of the districts and boroughs, because I think that's pretty important as we move forward the climate change agenda in the county. We're moving much more swiftly now and I'm really pleased to see it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. Helen Atkins and Gerry Rudehouse. Helen?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Jonathan and Keith were saying really in the urgency and the speed at this. I know there are targets within the, or not targets, but a timescale within the paper. But I think the problem really goes back to when we passed the climate change emergency and we didn't have any targets in there and therefore we're not moving quick enough. You know, we need to get to a point where we look at point four, environmental implications, and we actually see some positive, objective, measurable outcomes. And we feel like we're moving forward. So I am a bit concerned about the pace at which we're moving, but obviously it's welcome overall. Thank you.
And Gerry and then Cam Cor.
Thank you. I echo the previous comments about pace and paragraph four, really, where it talks about the environmental impact. And I suppose when you look at the appendices about the refresh, the bit that concerns me, we have the timescales. But it's actually the gearing, if you like, making sure that things are running together. So we're talking about highways in England, public transport, West Midlands Combined Authority, you know, Comptery, Warwickshire, LEP and all these bodies. You also have in place all the local plans which are being developed as well. So this document, to a certain extent, is out of kilter to everything else that's been going on. And hence, I think that that's going to take some work. Because otherwise, it's always going to be working behind what everybody else is up and doing. Because, you know, the Combined Authority, the LEP and local authorities are much further, I feel, down the track. And here we are, just starting off on this refresh. Great to see a timescale there. But I just do think that 2022 is, you know, it's quite a long way away. And everybody else would have moved on by then. And what we can't do or afford to do, I don't think, with the LTP is start looking at stuff. We need to look at the horizon with the LTP and make sure it catches up and then gears in with what the Combined Authority, the LEP and everybody else, the A5 Working Partnership are all doing. Otherwise, I just feel there's going to be opportunities which will be missed because it's just out of date.
Thank you, Gerry. And lastly, Cam Cor, and then back to you, Geoff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to pick up on a couple of things that everyone's saying. I mean, on one hand, some of our colleagues are saying we're rushing and we're not consulting and we're doing things too fast. And on the other hand, we're doing them too slow. So I think, first of all, we need to find a balance. And secondly, we've all just gone through, you know, some panels around the recovery and how that's going to look. And councillor Tims, my colleague, has talked about the climate change impact. And, you know, you've all talked about the climate change impact. But, you know, climate change has been happening for a long time. It's not going to, we're not going to have one size fits all and we're going to have, you know, a nice shining, wonderful, which would be lovely to have a clean climate Warwickshire, because we do have to work with partners. And as rightly you've said, there are so many partners involved in this that we need to work together and, you know, come up with a scheme and a plan together. And that does unfortunately take time. And I just want to pick up, yes, we've got timescales, but again, we're working to a performance framework, which hopefully will be here with you at the beginning of January, so that you can really start seeing, you know, the real performance around it. So I'm really, you know, I find this report really, it's really good report. It's been written well and it's good for Warwickshire. So onwards and upwards, I would say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And Geoff, we're back to you.
Thank you, Leader. I was going to pick up on the point that councillor Cor raised in relation to pace and making sure that we move at the right speed, I think, is probably the best way to put this, is to ensure that we move in line with our districts and boroughs to make sure that whatever we do is aligned to their work. And we're also delivering the opportunities for development across Warwickshire. Because what we don't want to do is impede the opportunities for businesses to develop in and around and across the area. So pace is important. And just in relation to that, I do need to amend one point about the pace and on the dates, on timescales. In relation to 5.11 on page 29, Leader, that should be October to December 2020, not 2021. Just so members are aware that we are starting this as soon as possible to move this forward. I contest the fact that we ignore our local transport plan. Officers are required to work to government guidance in relation to all our transport aspects and planning decisions. And they do do that. Along with also, we've already demonstrated our commitment in relation to railways and promoting and encouraging railway growth with the additional stations that we've put in and with the, hopefully, the development of rugby station as we move forward. Yes, there's been changing in guidance, has been identified. And that will give us an opportunity to be able to adapt the plan more readily and more easily as we move forward. And hopefully, it will make it a simplified version so that we don't have those long-winded proposals that you have to refer back to each section to do that. The other point councillor Tims mentioned, yeah, I mean, air quality, climate change is a very important aspect of this and that will need to be addressed. And hopefully councillor Tims might join us on the working group to help make sure that is progressed as well. The dates I've already discussed. Consultation, yes, we will be having to consult. That does take a period of time, obviously. But we'll try and move it as forward as speedily as possible. And Gerry, yeah, we do need to ensure that we work with the likes of the A46 partnership, the A5 partnership, and various agencies across the region who are developing their own strategies, such as highways in England in relation to their networks. So we need to make sure that we include and incorporate them into any of the local transport plan as we develop it. Hopefully, as I say, the dates are set out in the paper, which is, I think, reasonably ambitious given the amount of work that's got to be done. And the fact that we've got to consult with all our partners just leave some aspects to be desired. Sometimes in getting those responses back and then evaluating them. But I think that it's quite feasible, quite possible to do. And hopefully, by the end of next year, we'll be in a position to have a new local transport plan, which is far more simplified and better for people to understand and work to. I move the recommendations as set out on page 27, one, seven, three, Chair.
Thank you for that very much, Geoff. Can we ask for a show of hands for those who approve those recommendations? I think that looks like it is, again, unanimous. Thank you very much, members. You can put your hand down now. So we're now moving on to the next item, which is item four. which is item four on page 37. It's the Revenue Investment Funds 2020 to 2021 Quarter Two Report. This is to Peter Butler, please.
Thank you, Chair. As you know, Leader, earlier in the year, we set up the Revenue Investment Funds, which was four tranches of money, Sustainable Prevention Fund, Climate Change Fund, Commercial Fund, and the Place Shaping Fund. And that was, the £20 million was split between those. What I'm bringing for you today is two bids for money, which is the Career Digital Marketplace. This is £50,000 for a project that will further develop a digital solution that will sit between the schools, career advisers and businesses to provide online career support and business perspectives to 15 to 25-year-olds. Now, because of the COVID crisis, it's that particular age group that has been particularly badly affected. And as we go into a kind of a period where unemployment is increasing, it is the young and that age group that is severely affected by a downturn in the economy and unemployment. So I'm very keen to kind of bring this forward. And if there's any further bids to for proposals that will make life better for the kids between that age group, getting careers, better career advice, education, movement over to different areas, then I'm all ears and I'm willing to kind of like to consider more funding for the, especially this particular age group going forward. But this, this kind of is a good start in terms of making visibly, visible to this age group in terms of career choices. And I think it's a good move forward. The second part of this one is the Climate Change Community Investment Fund, and it's £1 million. This is basically to go to all our communities, like parish councils, town councils and community groups, who want to come forward to the full council bidding for climate change projects. Now, they may take, they'll take the form of community transport schemes, car sharing schemes, or anything that kind of reduces the carbon footprint in our communities. So they kind of can bid into this, and that's £1 million. And I'm pretty sure Heather, Heather Tims, can I say Heather Tims, will have further to say on this one. But also, I'm very keen to kind of bring this one forward and put back into the communities those, their enthusiasm for doing these sort of things. So there are the two schemes forward, and I'm willing to take questions.
Thank you very much. Right. And as expected, Heather Tims is the first to hands up.
Thank you, Chair. I have to say, I really do welcome the Climate Change Community Fund, Investment Fund. I think it's absolutely demonstrating our commitment to our local communities and to the climate change emergency that we declared in 2019. I am really excited by the grassroots organisations that I have seen coming forward with ideas around climate change. And I really want to see as many community groups as possible come forward with their ideas and to bid to the fund. This has the capacity to change hearts and minds within our communities as well and really get people thinking about climate change. So it'll be a tremendous commitment, I think, at the really grassroots level in our communities to the agenda that we're all supporting. Thank you, Chair.
I completely agree with you, Heather. And I think what's more important is, you know, we can, we as a local authority and our district and borough colleagues can all make our statement about climate change, but it's very much down to individual people and local communities to take that step forward as well. And this, I think, will help to share with them that journey that we're on. So really exciting step in the right direction. Yep. Keith, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Whilst it's quite exciting, community groups doing climate change stuff, it's good that the most high-quality things get approved and it's not just stick a sustainability badge on something. I know a lot of the parish councils are really good and local communities in bidding for money in some parts of Warwickshire, but I do think we need to help some areas where people aren't so good at bidding for money to actually get a share of the climate change pot. I'm particularly thinking of the west parts of the Neetons, Camp Hills, Kingswood, Barpools, some of these areas where climate change isn't their most immediate thing on their minds. But there's actually lots of community allotment projects and lots of things. So I think with our area offices or something, actually giving some more handholding to actually make sure we get this fund used for some interesting projects across the county, not just in the more affluent areas where people have got more time and skill to put bids in. Thank you.
And I know that they're aware of that already, and that will be part of it. I think people haven't talked so much about the digital marketplace. And Peter, I just want to say how important that is going to be in the future, coming out of COVID. How important it is that we start to use the digital marketplace to shape how people access jobs, how they're aware of it, and how we can inform them as well. It would be wrong to leave this without underplaying the role that we can play in helping to encourage people into new skills, new spheres, and to step forward and try and make Warwickshire as an exciting a place as far as the economy is concerned, as it was before we went into COVID. We still have much to do and a long way to go, but we want to come out of this in the same gearing as we were when we went into it. And that is one of the fastest growing economies in the country. So I'm really pleased too about that step forward. Thank you, Peter. Back to you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I kind of confer with that one. And I think you'll find there's a paper later into the day that kind of addresses the kind of digital resolution and kind of investing in those new ideas that have come about for the last six months. The last six months of COVID has accelerated a lot of the kind of digital needs and kind of a way forward in terms of when the way economy is going to be run. So this also will guide youngsters towards those digital opportunities. So I confer, I agree with that one. As the rest basically seems to kind of be in general support of what we're doing, I don't think there was any direct questions. So on that basis, I would like to move for approval of the motion as laid out.
Thank you. Yes. And that is on the two recommendations as printed on page 37. Can I ask for Cabinet's show of hands if they should approve this recommendation, these two recommendations? Yes, we have a full agreement on that. Thank you, Peter. You can now step down. So I'm going to move us on to item five, which is to Colin Hayfield, Adult and Community Learning Proposed Advisory Board. That's on page 43.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, the recommendation to Cabinet is to approve the formation of this advisory board to have oversight and to support the development of our council's adult and community learning service. This is a very timely and welcome initiative. It recognises that the work of the adult and community learning touches on to the orbits and ambitions of a number of our services. And this gathers many of them together into this advisory board and should take what is already a good service into an outstanding service, I hope.
Thank you. Right. So opening to any comments or questions? And I don't see any. Oh, yes, I do. Les Cable.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I was just welcome, welcome the paper and thank councillor Hayfield forward. I think this is a critical part as we help our population to be independent and lead fuller lives. And this is a good way forward because a board looking at the wider issues. And I'm sure we can move on in the quality, as councillor Hayfield has said. So, yeah, a good paper. Thank you, Chair.
I see no more hands, Colin. So it's back to you.
In which case, Leader, I move the recommendation as printed.
Oh, yes, yes. Sorry, I thought I saw a hand. But I think it is prompted by the recommendations being moved. And I'm waiting to see if all those approve it. One, two, three. We're there. Yes, we have unanimous approval, Colin, for your paper. So thank you, colleagues. I'm going to then move us back to the next, the next item, as I said earlier on, which was item 16. The Education Sufficiency Annual Update has been postponed. And we will move on to item seven, which, again, Colin, is you. It's the Warwickshire Education Strategy Update and Refresh. And this is on page 91.
Thank you, Leader. It was always anticipated a few years ago when we produced this education strategy that we would, in a timely fashion, review its progress and refresh its contents. And this paper does both. And on page 111, 112 is the proposed updated strategy. The preceding pages give the review of progress. And in terms of tweaking the strategy, I think there were two areas where we felt it needed a little strengthening. And that is itemised on page 1.4 and 1.5 of the report in terms of special educational needs and the early years. And I will happily take questions on this.
Now, I have got, I've got Les Cable and Andy Crump, both with their hands up, but I think they are leftover hands. So I'm going first of all, straight to Keith Condecor and then Gerry Rudhouse.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm most concerned the previous papers have been delayed. This paper about the general strategy talks about school sufficiency and also in particular talks about Neneaton, which has had a history of low achievement in the rest of Warwickshire. And I think the provision of school places and what we're doing with our multi-academy trusts and things is all important. I have in my ward a lot of housing, but we haven't got the schools yet for that housing. We have people, unfortunately, in Wellington having to go to Bedworth or Camp Hill or other places because they've moved in year. There are school places for reception year now, but there's a systematic problem that the schools haven't caught up with the developments. And we have a secondary school problem coming as people are getting older. So I'm most disappointed that the school sufficiency has been delayed. And I'm also disappointed we haven't made more progress with what's happened generally in the Neeton schools. In the paperwork, there's a link saying click here for transforming the Neeton presentation, which doesn't take you anywhere to anything about education. It's just transforming the Neeton on page 104. But yeah, we really do need to get the Neeton schools working well. It is that low-hanging thing where if we brought that up, it'd bring all our averages up in Warwickshire and really help the residents.
Thank you, Keith. And before I move on to Gerry, I will make a comment on why we decided to delay the previous item, the sufficiency item on education, and largely because we wanted a greater involvement of local members. I think it's such an important item in all of our agendas that local places, school places, is really, we really need to be engaged and understanding in that. And I don't believe that there has been that level of engagement. And so for those reasons, I've asked for it to be delayed. And that is why, rather than for any other reason, because I want members' input. Gerry, to you.
Thank you. Can I say, Colin, I recognise and think that actually the strategy now is starting to focus down on SEND and the early years and the best start. And I think actually in those paragraphs and the words that are written, if that can be translated into action on the ground, I think that will be really good, especially with the evidence which is coming back about particular areas of SEND, and also with the related mental health issues and health issues that are going on as well at the moment around that. So I think the change in that emphasis and putting it more into that, I think, is a welcome element of it. And it's an area of performance, I think, that we're going to have to keep a much closer eye on, especially through the rest of this year and into next year, to follow exactly how that's going. And I hope we could get more visibility of that upon the Power BI Performance Dashboard going forward as well.
Thank you, Gerry. Dave Parsons. Have we got you, Dave?
Sorry, Chair, I was just, you took me slightly by surprise and I wasn't very ready.
Well, you've come, you've joined us, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. It's a very brief question. I just wondered really when, I welcome the fact that the sufficiency policy has been held back so that local members can contribute, as it were. But I wonder if you could tell us when we might discover how local members are going to contribute. I'm not asking you the question about how, but when, as it were.
Well, thank you for that, Dave. And obviously, it's quite a big job to engage with local members. But, you know, we, all of us, in every single division, are facing growth and increases. And we really need to understand what this sufficiency paper needs for our areas and have some input and dialogue with the education department on that. All I can say is that I've asked that there should be an engagement with members. And I hope that that will be done as soon as possible. Clearly, it is important that we get it right. But from my view, getting it right means getting the views of local members. So that's the important part, I believe. And we need, we need to have that, that local knowledge as well. So I'm sorry, I may not, I don't know, Colin, if you, there are no other questions. So I will go back to you on this recommendation, and you might be able to have some comment to Dave. If not, we will ensure that it comes through to all members as soon as possible. Colin, back to you.
Thank you, Leader. Yes. In terms of councillor Condecor's comments, it was a neat trick to try and slip sufficiency into this, into this paper. But I'm sure he'll get his chance later on. In terms of Neneaton Schools, the Challenge Board has been set up, and I believe it's either had or about to have its first meeting, looking specifically at the issues relating to Neneaton Schools. And I'm sure there'll be feedback from that in due course. Gerry, yes, absolutely, you're right to focus on the challenges of SEND and early years. Dwayne Chapel is a breath of fresh air to this SEND service. And there was going to be a task and finish group that was agreed at the last council meeting that's going to be put in place very soon to monitor the SEND changes. Dave, local member involvement, absolutely. The Leader is absolutely right. This is a key element that needs to be incorporated into this. I think we can suggest, hopefully by the end of the week, some possible strategy for involving elected members. Although the Leader and the Leaders Group might want to have, make observations as well themselves on behalf of their respective groups. But yes, we do need to get a move on with this. The annual sufficiency strategy is just that, it's an annual strategy. But there are these emerging issues that members clearly need reassurance on before we proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Colin. And I very much welcome the fact that members are going to be consulted. That's, thank you for that.
Yes, it will be done. Leader, if you're content, I'll then move the recommendation that we note the update on the strategy and endorse the recommendations of refresh set out in appendices three and four.
Thank you very much for that. Can I ask for a show of hands, please? Yes, that is agreed, Colin, unanimously. Thank you. You can pop your hands down now. And next item is, the next item is on page 115. It is the Integrated Risk Management Plan, the Assurance Panel. So Andy Crump, this is your domain.
Thank you, Leader. Again, this is a very positive example of Warwickshire Fire and Rescue being open and inclusive and happy to receive constructive and happy to receive constructive challenge and inspection. Recently, I was interviewed as part of the COVID-19 inspection by HMICFRS. And I'm sure we all get a positive feedback, positive result from that. There's lots of information in, in the report. What's the Tom Windsor in the Annual State of Fire and Rescue Services? Basically, he says the fire authorities need assurance that fire services are working efficiently and effectively resourcing that risk as well. So under the IRMP, we have to address areas of risk and managing for foreseeable future risk. And this is a way of making sure we look at those, those risks effectively. Members oversight on the task and finish groups has been really positive, we all worked well. And I think this is another example of moving forward with this. And basically, we'll be creating a cross-party IRMP Assurance Panel and widening its remit to ensure that continue, there's a continual overview and monitoring of Warwickshire Fire and Rescue's IRMP. We will also have the opportunity to have a critical friend with another fire service. We already do that for two local fire services. And there's an opportunity to reciprocate, for them to reciprocate again, providing added input, a fresh pair of eyes and sometimes some new ideas as well. So a very positive paper coming forward. I'm happy to take any questions. But yes, thank you.
I'm just, thank you very much, Andy. I'm looking to see if anyone has their hand up. And I think you may get away lightly with this. There is, Sarah, well done. Sarah Bird. Oh, has she gone? She did briefly.
No, no, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I was just admiring Andy's rather jaunty microphone.
Yes, I know, it's a special angle, that one, isn't it?
I think after being on TV earlier in the week, he's, he's got a taste for it. All I wanted to say was I think it's really good to have a panel that is continuous. We have, we used to have a panel that was continuous a few years ago. Then it was decided it was better to have starting and stopping and starting and stopping. And I think it's, it's much better to have a panel with a continuous oversight in this way. So I think the more, the more that members, a group of members are familiar with fire and rescue issues, the better it is.
I wonder if that then is a bid, Sarah, for you to be on this panel?
I would, I'd be more than happy to have councillor Bird on the panel. She's always been very helpful and constructive on, on this, so I can put you down.
I do my best, thank you.
Lovely, thank you very much, Sarah. Andy, back to you, just to wrap up.
Thank you, thank you, Leader. Just happy to move the recommendations on page 115.
Thank you. Can I ask for a show of hands in support of the recommendations? Yes, we have, we have full agreement, thank you. That's unanimous, Andy. Thank you. Right, we're getting on. This, this was always going to be a big agenda. So we're nearly into double figures, but this is, next item is number nine. And this is the strategic framework for 2020 to 2025 for the Gypsy Roma and Traveller Provision in Warwickshire. And this is Heather, this is over to you.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Yes, the Gypsy Roma Traveller Strategic Framework is a report which sets out, for the very first time actually, our broad strategic priorities that will enable partners across the county to work together to deliver long-term change in, in our approach to provision. The five priorities are there to strike the right balance of support for families and their cultures and traditions, whilst ensuring that our provision is right and that we are using our enforcement to address unauthorized encampments. We have developed these priorities in consultation and collaboration with a wide range of partners and representatives of the Gypsy Roma Traveller Community. We do have some financial decisions in there to be made. They are just there for noting at this stage and they will form part of a policy report, which will come back in the spring 2021. I would say, I think the priorities really do give us a focus on a consistent approach to dealing with unauthorized encampments. And we'll be reviewing all of our options around the provision of sites, et cetera. So, and also obviously looking at how injunctions for locations that are constantly affected by unauthorized encampments are taken forward. Thank you, Chair, I welcome any questions.
Thank, thank you, Heather. Yes, it's, it's very clearly, and those four, five priorities are all set up under four, under chapter four. So clear, clear and clear as a bell. So I've got Helen, then Geoff Morgan, then Dave Parsons. Helen Atkins.
Thanks, Chair. I just wondered, I mean, I know, sorry, my phone's going off, just went off.
Always does.
So this, this community, I think, I think we need to be aware that the traveller community is part of the BAME community. So I, I know that, you know, we passed or full council passed a motion on the 22nd relating to the BAME community, making us sort of think and drill down a little bit more on how we communicate with people who face inequalities already. So I just wonder if all our, all our communications so far have been reviewed in relation to how we would, how we communicate and how we will communicate going forward to this, this community. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, very good point, absolutely. So next we have Geoff Morgan and then followed by Dave Parsons. Geoff Morgan.
Thank you very much, Izzy. I do welcome this. Some of my residents in Bulkington, however, have experienced real problems with the gypsies and travellers, in particular issues such as abuse of the planning system, illegal occupation of green belt on top road, illegal dumping, burning of waste, sewage in watercourses, antisocial behaviour, et cetera. I would be grateful, Heather, if you could reassure me that these issues will be addressed through the measures proposed by the paper we have before us. We certainly need better communication between the two communities and I hope this paper will facilitate that. I'm happy to support anything that improves lines of communication between travellers and residents. And I would be very happy to remain closely engaged in this project going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then it's Dave Parsons.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things. First of all, I very much welcome the five priorities. They do actually look very good to me and I have to say that. But I'd have to echo the concerns that Geoff has brought for them actually because those concerns are very definitely there around the, the Alvco site on, in my patch, basically. I would question how effective we're going to be on these priorities, given the staffing we've got in the Gypsy and Travellers unit. And I wonder whether there is any plan to actually beef that up somewhat? Because I think it's, it's going to be required to actually make, you know, to realise these ambitious priorities, which, which I hope it is. I would like to address specifically the Alvco site, which is on my patch. And it does mention there that there are to be improvements in the boundary fencing and CCTV and drainage and sewage. I just want to check that the boundary fencing, it does apply to Alvco because the boundary fencing does look very tired and is a bit of a common source of irritation for some of the local residents. The CCTV is very welcome and, and I think is necessary. The Alvco CCTV system which exists appears to be very problematic. I just wonder if it would be possible to organise a presentation of what the CCTV system is going to actually involve and what it's going to cover for local councillors? Because it is local councillors that the, the general populace come to. And it would, it will be really helpful if we could explain that, which, if we can have a presentation, would be, will be really useful. So it's, it's staffing essentially, the specific reference to Alvco and the CCTV system there really, Heather. Sorry to throw all three at you at once.
Lovely, thank you very much, Dave. Back to you, Heather.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Specifically to address councillor Hopkins' point. Priority one does talk about how we address discrimination within this community. And we're talking about a series of community engagement programmes which help to create stronger links and a better understanding of the culture and identity of gypsies and travellers. And from that to take forward a longer term community engagement communication strategy. We, we need to develop this work, this is not short, going to be a short term fix of anything. It is a long term strategy that we want to put in place to move things forward in Warwickshire. On your point, councillor Morgan, yes. Priorities four and five address the issues that cause us the most problematic for our residents across the county. And I, I believe that the pudding says dating what we will do and how we will do it by having a Warwickshire hub of expertise which reports into the Safe for Warwickshire partnership actually formalises the relationships that we've already built, but makes them stronger as a result and make, will make us ensure that we address the issues around unauthorized encampments. So I'm, I'm very clear that we've got two priorities that address that. Councillor Parsons, the financial issues are not, are not, we put them into this report to ensure that members start to gain an awareness of them. And absolutely, we'll be having a discussion with local members where, where that affects as we take this forward. As I said, we'll be looking to put forward a policy in the spring that, that starts to take account of this. And we will make sure that local members are involved in it. What I would say to you at this point is we want to make best use of the expertise that we have and the expertise that we are building. Whether that means will lead to an increase in staffing, I, I cannot say at this point and I'm, I'm not going to. I think we need to look at having these priorities in place and then building on the back of that what policies we need. The review of the Gypsy and Traveller Protocol, which was established in 2017, and making sure all our processes are formalised and that we work well with partners. Thank you, Chair.
Heather, thank you very much. So, so if we go back to page 119, we've got three recommendations in there. Under the recommendation two, there are three bullet points. So I'm going to ask if Cabinet want to approve those recommendations, if they would now show their hands. Yes, that's, that's agreed, Heather, unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank, thank you very much for that paper. So that was Agenda Item Nine. And Agenda, Agenda Item 10 is the establishment of a residents' panel. And that will be taken by councillor Cam Corr and it's on page 143 for info.
Thank you, Chair. Before I begin, can I just thank councillor Rudhouse, and he might be surprised by this, to just thank him for all his comments and recommendations he made whilst the report was being put together. So Gerry, a big films up and a big thank you to you. I'm sure you-
Always my pleasure for you, councillor.
I'm sure you'll talk on this later. But I just wanted to pick up really on talking about the background, which is on page 143. In particular, during COVID-19, we have seen exceptional community engagement and participation from voluntary groups, mutual groups. And I just wanted to say just how much work and involvement they've had over the last six months. And it's really important to say that, you know, it links in with the voluntary and community sector strategy as well. But not only that, if I make reference also, we approved back in 2019 the customer experience strategy as well. And this links very much in that. So if I'm coming across a bit excited, Chair, I really am, over this. And there you go, I said I would say it. So the approach really supports our desire and ambition to be an evidenced and intelligent led organisation. And what this really does is provide the facility to ask polling type questions and also undertake smaller focus group workshops type approaches to meet and help shape our complex. And sometimes, you know, difficult policy and issues that we have, the panel will also inform policy development and help us respond to complex issues such as the very topic we've been talking about all afternoon, such as climate change, tackling inequalities. And we've just had a paper on that. And again, recovering from COVID. So the residents' panel will be linked into the council plan. And, and what we intend to do is anticipate the refresh next year and beyond. So how will we use it? Offers facility to sample resident views and explore subjects in detail with smaller groups. And then the timescales around this, you'll see that there's some timescales identified and a plan of action really on page 148 of the report. But really, just to give you a flavour, recruitment to the panel will be conducted by an independent organisation, which is commissioned to recruit participants, participants to provide assurance. And that invitation to join the panel is representative and fair. And again, the specification and procurement will commence, week commencing the 19th of October. If I may, Chair, just briefly mention the LGR, which is also in recommendation for-
Local Government Reform, for those listening.
Yes, sorry, Chair. It was a resolution of full council on the 22nd of September and it's one of the recommendations of item four. Just to say, this will be again commissioned and set up by an independent body. So Chair, may I stop there and I'm open to take questions at this point?
Absolutely. And we have Gerry Rudhouse, followed by Keith Condecor.
Thanks, yeah. It was one of those reports where I thought some comments were worthwhile. So the independent panel, for those of us who've been around for some time, will remember Maori and the Citizens Panel and a few other things as well. So this is like a reinvention really, bringing it back. But it is right that we should go out there independently and also take soundings from within communities and from panels. And it's just ensuring that independence really is, is what we want. I won't mention LGR, but I just mentioned Local Government Reform on there. But yeah, that definitely needs to be a totally separate body, which is not looking at anything to do with, if you like, the issues. And it could just focus on that. So having the two bodies, I understand the commissioning, yeah, it's going to be one commissioning cycle, which is good for efficiency and cost. And then there'll be a choice then and the tenderers will have to make their, their responses based on both those panels. So, yep, look forward to it.
Thank you. And then Keith, then we have Dave Parsons.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's important to see what things we're going to balance up in terms of, you know, we want to representative panels. So it's useful to know if they geography and, yeah, there's two or three things we, we want in there. Because there are always the same people who always want to go on panels. So it's good that we get so many independents to pick them. And it'd be good that they're, that they've got a reasonable number of young people in as well because I think that would, would help us a lot. I'm finding myself getting older and I'm sure it's happened to all of us. So it's good to get a good mix of younger people in the panel as well. The other thing is, I always remember the Yes Prime Minister where Humphrey app shows Bernard how you can get whatever result you want from a survey. So I do hope when we ask you some of these more controversial questions, there is actually some sanity check or some check that we aren't actually asking the question to get the answer we want. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, can I just respond to Keith by saying, yes, Minister?
Yeah. Yeah. And I was actually going to just- Yeah. Yeah. And I was actually going to just say that we've got a fantastic youth parliament who have been elected by their own peers. And I've always advocated that we use that, that group of people who are there, have their own priorities. And, and you know, it doesn't necessarily mean that we lump them straight into a citizens panel. Obviously, we have a process to go through, but it doesn't mean that we exclude them from that level of engagement because they are elected to represent their, their youth community. So, you know, I'm always keen to engage with them as, as I think they are very keen to engage with us as well. So, so I'm just going to Dave Parsons then Heather, Cam, and then back to you. Dave Parsons.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the, the establishment of a residence panel has got to be good news. And I understand your excitement about this, Cam. It's a good thing to do, definitely. And the, the only concern I've got is, is a standing panel. Keith has mentioned the fact that, you know, it's, it's, you tend to get a sort of a fairly, people who like doing these things, if it's simply a standing panel. And nothing wrong with that, but that, that's there. I just wondered if it's going to be supplemented by some random sampling as well. Because I think that's, that's very important. Otherwise, we're getting, we're in danger of getting a sort of fixed audience really, that might not be terribly representative. Thank you.
Good point. And then finally Heather, and then back to you, Cam.
Yes, Chair, I just wanted to say I'm eagerly excited by this coming forward. I think it's great news for the residents of Warwickshire. I'm really looking forward to seeing the feedback that I get with regard to the climate change programmes that we've now really got running. I want also to mention the Warwickshire Youth Council that I spoke to only this week. Great group of young people who had very challenging questions. So, and, and felt really it was great for them to be informed about what the council were doing and everything. So I'm sure that we'll be continuing those exercises alongside the residence panel, which I welcome the way that its independence is being put in place. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Great. Back to you, Cam.
Thank you, Chair. Just to come back to Heather and to yourself, just to give you the reassurance that we are looking at ways of encouraging and being inclusive of our younger communities, particularly the youth council, as you've mentioned, the Warwickshire Youth Council, our Parliament Council, and also looking at other ways we can get our, let's say, younger residents involved in, in policymaking and all the, all, all the decisions that are being made currently. Just to go back, just, and also to confirm, the residence panel is not a static panel. So in terms of, you know, there will be other ways of communicating, engaging our residents in terms of polling, for example, you have YouGov, but making it a lot more local to, to Warwickshire. And so, you know, there are, there are many ways of consulting. And I'm afraid we're a bit behind the curve in this and I think we need to be a bit more innovative. And I think that's what this paper is all about, is looking at different ways of connecting with our residents. It's great that it's an independent, independent organisation that's setting it up and putting our independent panel together. But it will not be the same people, just, just to add. So depending on what top, what topic and what issue it is, that's how it will be determined. Thank you, Chair. I see no further speakers. In which case, Chair, may I move the recommendations as set out on page 143 of the report? And it is recommendations one to four, Chair.
That's super. So taking that, can those in agreement raise their hands? And yes, you have a, you have unanimous support for that. Thank you. Thank you very much, Cam. So moving on, item, oopsie, item 11. I've just lost item 11, excuse me a moment. I'm still another. Item 11 is the addition of the capital scheme at Henley High School. And Colin, this will, I'm not sure whether this is you or whether it's Peter.
It's, it's me, Leader, and I'm trying desperately to hide my sense of excitement on this as well. This effectively replicates what we did at Paddocks a couple of cabinet meetings ago with Henley and Arden. That is to create, allocate money from the capital programme to create a specialist resource provision at Henley and Arden Primary School. What is rather misleadingly called the executive summary is in fact the main body of the report. And it's concise and to the point. It emphasises on 1.2 that it allows learners with send to attend local settings and provides a bridge between mainstream specialist provision, exactly that. The next few paragraphs talk about the situation at Henley and Arden itself. It then goes on 1.6 to 1.8 to talk about what the provision will look like. And then from 1.9 to 1.11, it talks about the added value that this will provide to the young learners with send needs that will attend this provision. So I think it, it, it's a good news story all round. It's what we are trying to build up across the county to reduce the number of pupils having to be sent either to a specialist centre or to a specialist centre outside the county. I'd welcome any questions that people have.
I'm, thank you very much, Colin. I'm looking to see, there are no hands, but I, I just would like to say, I think this is absolutely the right direction of travel. You know, young children should be as best as possible managed within their own community, be that their school community or their own community. And I think this is so important that we do provide these. So thank you. Actually, I've now got Helen. So Helen, do come in.
Yeah, I, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for the reports and to, it'd be great if we could get more of these kind of programmes underway, which is fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah. There you go. Back to you, Colin.
In which case, Leader, thank, I, I will move the recommendation as printed to allocate just over half a million pounds to create this resource provision in Henley and Arden Primary School.
Yep. Excellent. So those in favour, please show now and you'll take that vote. Yes, unanimous support for that, Colin. Delighted to say. Good. Thank you. And I will move us on to, that was getting there. 12, which is transforming Nunneton. This is on page 153 to 170. And of course, we have had one speaker on this already, Michelle Condarco. So over to you, Geoff, please.
Thank you, Leader. And I hope to contain my excitement as well as Colin did in the last item. Obviously, this is a significant amount of money that we're looking for, for the transforming Nunneton and the highway improvements programme. The Cabinet report is to request for overall transforming Nunneton highway improvements. It's a total cost of £29.6 million, of which capital investment fund, funding is sought for £21.7 million to construct four highway mitigation schemes along the A treble four, Nunneton Ring Road. And that's, as you probably, many people will be aware, the A treble four goes around Nunneton. And this includes junctions of Corporation Street, Powell Way, Queen's Road, Wheat Street and also Leicester Road, Back Street, Preton Street. It should be noted that recent modelling has shown that traffic counts since lockdown for COVID, the traffic levels are again rising, but they're not quite yet to the stage that we had pre, pre lockdown. But they're rising nevertheless. DFT haven't given any guidance in relation to making any assumptions on the effect of COVID at the moment. However, there are various recommendations coming from government in relation to various schemes. It should also be noted that the highway improvements scheme will hopefully help encourage the modal shift that we're looking for from the private car to more sustainable modes of transport, i.e. bus, rail, cycling, et cetera, and pedestrian. Excuse me. Modelling has also shown that whilst there's been an issue with Harefield Road, as was identified earlier by the speaker, there are three arms that currently do have two lane entrances to that, that island with only one from Harefield Road. And the other aspect is that we don't have any control in relation to the feed from one area of that site. But with the mitigation, with the proposals that we see before as an recommendations, improvements at Leicester Road and Corporation Street, which are required anyway, would mitigate the problems that are sometimes experienced at the, at the Harefield Road roundabout. I should mention also, there are two other highway schemes along with this, which include further cycling facility improvements, additions which will be funded via a combination of 106 monies and external funding streams, which is currently being led by Nunneton and Bedworth Borough Council with their Future High Streets Fund and, and TANs Fund. There's also the A treble four Weddington Terrace North South Junction, again, which is included in that. The designs shown in the report, Chair, are very much feasibility design at this stage, it should be said, to show that works alleviate, alleviate the vehicle problems that we have in the area. We'll, we'll hopefully deliver that. Once the preliminary designs commence, we will engage with local stakeholders to ensure that the needs of locals are met. There's already been some positive engagement with the British Gurkhas in relation to the A treble four Caden Road scheme. Cycling audit has been incorporated in the feasibility designs throughout the town centre have been undertaken. So those, they're still going, ongoing. And the recommendations within the audit will be completed within, with the external funding as suggested above. Should point out, Leader, that land acquisition is essential to the success of the programme. The roundabout, the A treble four Leicester Road, Back Street, Regent Street has been shown through traffic modelling to provide a more robust solution to the problem of movement of traffic in that area. However, I should point out at this point, we're not looking at CPO and we will be consulting with any businesses that may be affected. And in fact, I think, believe the discussions have already commenced with some of the businesses in those areas. Again, the relocation of the bus station is not included within the programme of this report. And it is however, early days, but it's an aspiration for, for us to align the bus and rail services and, and to get that transformation in Nunneton and through Nunneton. But early indications from bus operators and their support has been quite encouraging to date. There's, there will be options to, for buses to be able to penetrate the town so that we can get people in and out of the town with possible superstops as they sometimes refer them to. And there's the desire to create the transport hub that will actually lead on the transforming Nunneton. I mean, this, this demonstrates the county council's commitment to investing in Nunneton. It's a significant amount of money to be importing in. There are measures within the programme that ensure that whatever we do is, is safe and robust. The mitigation measures would, I, I hope also, and I nearly missed that one, the air quality managers, management areas in both Abbey, Abbey Green area and the Leicester Road area. The proposals would hopefully reduce both of those to better levels as we move forward. And also, as recognised, given the number of schemes within this, it will release some of the pinch points that we have for people accessing the town. Some of the outputs will see improved cycling and pedestrian facilities around the mitigated junctions, as we say, and making it easier to navigate from the railway station into the town itself for pedestrians and cyclists. Transport modelling has also shown that the measures will reduce the emissions, again, going back to the AQMA's, by keeping traffic and free flowing. The Wheat Street scheme, as identified here, will also open up the development opportunities within the Vicarage Street to ensure that we, we encourage developers to come in and develop those sites that are available in, in the current area. Finally, the highway benefit cost ratio, and I know that's probably not something that members of the public will be aware of, but do give a benefit cost ratio of 2.34, which represents a very high value for money. And it's scored very highly in relation to the evaluations that we, that's, that it's gone through. I welcome questions on this, Chair. I do welcome the council's opportunity within this. And I hope that they will take, the recommendations on board, that's from one to four on page 153 in the report, Chair. Happy to take questions.
I know that's, that's very comprehensive, but I think there's one thing that you missed and it's the Dandelion Roundabout.
You're quite right. Do you want me to come in there, Chair? There's so, there's so much to try and remember in this. The Dandelion Roundabout is, is iconic in Nunneton and it's already been identified. If, if necessary and required, there is opportunity to move that and we would relocate it and in consultation with any, any of the agencies or public that want to be involved in that. We're happy to take on that consultation and move it wherever is required. I know, I know, you know, as part of transforming Nunneton, there is a push to develop the Riversley Park and there may be opportunity there. I'm not sure, I'm not, it's not a suggestion or anything, but there's, there may be opportunity. But I do welcome the report and I do thank you very much for the prompt, Leader, on that one.
I love that roundabout. So I always enjoy it, often disappointed if it's not turned on. So there we are. Thank you very much. It is a huge investment in Nunneton and I think part of a programme. And we, we had already the library investment as well. So, I mean, it's really, you know, it's hard to underplay the, the level of investment and the opportunity that this brings. So I'm really grateful that you've brought this paper to us today. So I've got Keith followed by Dave Parsons, followed by Heather.
I'm going to disagree a bit with Geoff, unfortunately. We have made some spectacularly bad highway projects and we've made some good highway projects. Probably one of the more successful recently has been Coaten Arches, where we did lots of consultation. We tweaked the design and Coaten Arches was relatively value for money and it was a good process. We've had a lot of appalling processes like Bermuda Bridge, the malfunction traffic lights in the middle of Bedworth and Rugby Eastern Relief, or Western Relief Road. This is going to be one of the really spectacular ones if we don't defer this for a few months and actually ever think about what we want to do. This is a decade old highway project using 1970s ideas of building roads wider and bigger and bigger junctions to get more traffic through a town centre. Your own air quality study actually says this project makes the air quality worse on the Leicester Road giratory because it brings more traffic into town. And it only makes the traffic better on Corporation Street because it moves that traffic into town. The whole thing is based upon a massive lot of mistakes, misassumptions. The cost benefit isn't actually 2.3, it is actually one and a bit. It only becomes 2.3 because of the bus improvements and the, and the 2% modal shift. You only get that modal shift with bits that aren't in this current bid. At the moment, we've got a £30 million road project. At the moment, we've got a £30 million road project. All the good bits I want, the bus interchange, the cycling routes, the entrance to the railway station, none of that is in. You've got none of the good bits, you've only got the ginormous road project. And what the ginormous road project does is not good for the environment. In this report, you actually have the nerve to say this is supporting the climate change agenda. You actually make it out that it supports moving people from traffic motorised vehicles to public transport. Spending £30 million on making the roads bigger does not do that. This needs to be done in a far more sustainable way. We need to spend the money on fixing the problems in Nuneaton. The Ring Road has got so many malfunctions on it. My wife has mentioned the problems at Asda. If you go down Backstreet, two lanes of traffic stops at a traffic light with a four-way sequence and one lane. So we do need to traverse and change around and sort out our ring road. But a £30 million highway project, which is going to be drawing more traffic through the town and creating more pollution on all the roads into town, is actually going to be a very backward step. We need to consult on this, we need to actually release all the documents. The officers this afternoon or this morning gave me the documents submitted to the funding bid, the CIF documents. Those need to be released to the public, accepting the financial information, I take that, so the public can understand what you're really planning and the details of this. This removes a large quantity of trees, makes life harder for people crossing the roads because you're making the roads wider and is very much an anti-environmental project. This is backwards thinking. We need to be thinking about where the bus station is as first part of this project. Because until you've worked out where the bus station is, you can't effectively design the road network. And this should be put forward with the bus station as part of the package. So if you're just designing a package, it's like designing a car and not deciding if the engine is in front or the back. We're designing a road network here without designing where the bus station is. We need the bus station moving to be the first part of this project, not an afterthought. I mean, I could go on at great length, but I really ask, Chair, this item is deferred. This is not an environmental project, it makes climate change and air pollution worse. You have only measured the air pollution in the air quality management zones. You've not worked out what you've done to the highway network. There are just so many things wrong with this, I really, yeah, I'd be ranting for hours if you let me, Chair, I know you won't.
No, I won't, no. And what I am delighted to hear you say is how the Coaten Arches is one of the good projects that we've done because I distinctly remember you saying how awful it was going to be and how it was not going to, it shouldn't have been done that way. But it's good to know that you change your mind sometimes. So I'm moving on to Dave Parsons.
Thank you, Chair. I have to confess to being a fellow admirer of the fountain, it is beautiful and, yes, it definitely needs to go somewhere, it's very good. I have to say, I've got to share some of Keith's reservations. Before I became a councillor, I spent five years working on the canals and my progress through Nuneaton was often quicker in my rather ropey canal workboats than the traffic. And Nuneaton does have terrible congestion problems and something needs to be done. But when you look at the map, it is drawing traffic into the centre. And is that a good thing to do? I do think there is a need for more local consultation here. I understand that absolutely something has got to be done in Nuneaton because twice a day it stops. And that's there. But I do think the Keith's point of the transport hub is absolutely essential and really ought to be a starting point. And again, you know, it seems a little perverse to bring traffic into the town. I can't think of any other scheme where we'd be sort of particularly, we'd be looking to move it out of the town and this is not there. So, yes, it's really important that Nuneaton has some investment because that's been long delayed. But I'm not absolutely sure that this is the right form of investment at this point in time. Thank you, Chair.
Dave, thank you very much. Next I have Heather and then Peter.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I really welcome this report. It's, you know, allocating £22 million nearly to the road improvements in Nuneaton, which is going to see substantial housing development coming forward. And we know we always need to provide the infrastructure because that is always the gear around how developments work. And if you do it upfront and at the start of this process, it all helps. I do welcome the report actually saying that a key driver behind the scheme is the environmental improvements anticipated around the Nuneaton town centre and also supporting the climate emergency and the two air quality management areas. They have undertaken an assessment of the scheme on both those two air quality management areas and it shows an improvement in both of these areas. If this, when this scheme, I'm going to say if, I'm going to say when this scheme is implemented. You can disagree with me, Mr Condekor, and I'm sure that hopefully in the future, we'll see you change your mind in exactly the same way as you've done on Coaten Arches. Thank you for that little nod of head and shaking. But actually, the report says it, there has been an assessment made, a tailpipe assessment. So, and it quantifiably demonstrates the scheme's substantial support in achieving Warwickshire County Council's climate change and environmental and sustainability objectives. And I'm quite clear that the report is stating those things and I want to make sure that everybody is aware that we are addressing these concerns in putting together these quite monumental schemes, which have the opportunity to drive forward the economy in Nuneaton, to give people jobs and a sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And Peter, you're next.
Thank you, Chair, as I click everything on. Yeah, I welcome this report, it's £21.7 million. I must draw your attention to the fact that it kind of goes up to £29.6 when you include all the 106 agreement funding. And also, there's a possibility that this could go up to somewhere in the region of 35.4 with other kind of funding arrangements that could be drawn in from elsewhere. So there is a great deal of money going to be spent in Nuneaton and the road system. I must also point out, I'm also on the Nuneaton Town Deal Board and we're preparing a bid in there for a further £25 million to be spent on the Nuneaton town centre. And in that bid, there's also further kind of connectivity improvement schemes, I'm not going into the detail of them. But they include things like second station access, road cycle links, e-mobility, all these things are in that bid. So this is just the start in terms of kind of structurally getting the ring road right and able to cope with the kind of the traffic that is there now. And as Nuneaton grows, and we want it to grow, I want it to grow, as more and more job opportunities, residents move towards the centre for sustainable living and closer to that railway station, which is underused in my opinion, there will be growth into the centre of Nuneaton. So, and the other thing is, Keith, I'm glad you ended up, the fact that you do go on a bit. Reading all sorts of stuff, you do go on a bit. They, I kind of saw there, you're kind of criticising the kind of the way in which we model these schemes and you were saying we shouldn't model in so much growth. But part of our job is to model in 10 years, to make it kind of a, we don't have to kind of go back after two because we got it wrong. And if we are looking for growth in Nuneaton in terms of those job opportunities, business opportunities, there would inevitably, despite the fact we're looking for modal shift, be an increase in traffic. And so taking that into account, this is the right scheme for the right thing and it's only just part of what we're proposing for the future of Nuneaton as well. So I'm happy to kind of vote for this scheme.
Keith, you have spoken already, if there is anything new that you have got to say, you will be allowed a very brief amount of time, but it has to be new items.
Thank you, Chair, I think the 2.5% modal shift is something that we need to do better on. So I asked for it to be redesigned to have a far bigger modal shift so that this new development that will happen won't be car-dominated.
Thank you, Keith, thank you. Geoff Morgan, you're next.
Thank you, Izzy. I shall resist joining in the bashing of councillor Condekor. Poor chap, he's on the floor at the moment. All I would like to say is really to repeat something that you yourself said, that this enormous investment plus the £19 million we've set aside for the library and the business centre shows how much Warwickshire County Council is committed to the regeneration of Nuneaton. And I'm very proud to be part of the council that's trying to do so much for my hometown. So I support this paper 100%.
So, Geoff, I think that is all the hands. What I would just say is, there will be differing views on this. Keith has very strongly expressed his concerns. I think we are duty-bound to ensure that we look into all the points he has raised and consider whether the proposal we've got is absolutely sound, solid and delivers against all our ambitions and hopes. I'm not going to pull it, but all I would say is that we are still in the early development stage and we have plenty of chance to reconsider all parts of it. And clearly, as Heather has already identified, we are about trying to do that modal shift and we are about trying to reduce the impact that traffic and air quality may have on residents. So what we know is, as it is now, we have a stationary ring road for twice a day, which is pumping out poor quality air to our residents at a time when children are going to school and coming back from school. We have to do something about it and this level of investment will draw in huge external investment into one of our more important towns and one where we need to level up the equality. So I think it's a really exciting project. Geoff, back to you.
Thank you, Leader. I anticipated a deal of debates on this and I appreciate the strong strength of feelings within this. I do disagree with councillor Condekor in relation to his perception for this. The aspiration might have been a decade old, but now is the time that we have the opportunity. And modelling and consultation will be part of each of the schemes as it comes forward. So there is still a great deal of opportunity and a great deal of development to be done and hopefully attracting further investment into the town. The other point, I think you mentioned, public travel and active travel need to be done in conjunction rather than with making new roads, rather than making roads work and not in isolation. They have to be part of the design when we're doing them and that will take place as we go through the various stages. The main leader, and I'm perhaps a little bit on the line here, but we could offer some member briefings in relation to the Nuneaton roads scheme and the designs and developments, happy to do that, Leader, if you're agreeable with that. We can bring those along with any proposals that may be being developed at any time. And happy to do that, Leader, if you're agreeable. But I will move the recommendations and I do welcome this amount of investment into Nuneaton. It's a game changer, I think, to be honest with you. And I think we should welcome the County Council's recognition of the need for this investment in Nuneaton. So I'll move the recommendations as set out in one to four, Leader, and hope that members can support that.
Thank you, and that is as laid out on page 153. And so I'm looking for votes on this at the moment. That's unanimous, Geoff.
Thank you, Leader. Thank you very much for the input and we will do those consultations.
Thank you for that and a significant changing day for Nuneaton, I would suggest. Thank you. Now, this is the last agenda item before we go into the private papers. So agenda item 13, and this is on page 171 to 200. This is the County Council response to the government planning for the future consultation. And once again, Geoff, it's your show.
Thank you, Chair. It's been a busy day. Yes, as some members will be aware, the government have put out a consultation and we need to respond to that consultation as an authority.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, I meant to just refresh people's mind that we are putting an additional item in on this recommendation. And I wondered if Paul could share the screen for that additional recommendation. Otherwise, I'll ask you to read it out, but it would be helpful whilst you're introducing it, sorry, back to you.
Not a problem, Leader. As I say, the government paper sets out proposals for government planning reform. We, as an authority, need to do a response on that. And that's got to be submitted by the end of October, October 29th in actual fact. The response that we've put together within the report has been informed by members' briefings, which was held on September 15th and many members included in that and gave good good feedback in relation to what they feel is appropriate and what we should be asking for. There is a further recommendation as identified, which is now up on the screen. What I should say is that the council would want to incorporate into its response any proposals that at this stage are as broad and high-level area, but it is a complete shake-up of the planning system in England, Wales, and probably well overdue in actual fact, similar to the local transport plan in the previous item. It makes it easy to, hopefully makes it easy to understand how planning goes ahead with various authorities and functions that they hold. Welcome the intention that will also be brought about by the opportunity to speed up decision-making and, as I say, reduce the ambiguity for stakeholders. There is also, again, an interest in increased digitisation for the government funds during the development of it. And also, there is a challenge to the affordability and deliverability of the transition time scales. We've got concerns around all of those areas. We also would oppose, Leader, proposals that all land fitting to one of three zone types and the associated automated planning permissions that come with two of those zones. So we do recognise that we need to identify with government our concerns around those. We oppose the national determination of housing requirements, which without any local adjustments or rebalancing, I think most areas across the county have been subject to concerns around that as we've gone through the local plan reviews and the imposition of housing targets in recent years. We also oppose the national infrastructure levy, but we do support a streamlining, possibly the section 106 process. And also finally, opposing any regime for funding infrastructure where councils are then required to carry significant risks and then the funds won't be provided. That is basically saying that we need to develop the infrastructures before the houses are actually on-site and any money coming in to offset and to deliver those schemes. As many members will be aware, at the moment, it's the other way around whereby we currently develop the schemes as developments come forward and then it's offset by that. They say there was a very good member seminar, which was really helpful in developing these responses. And I thank all the members for their inputs in relation to that. And I thank all the members for their inputs in relation to that. And I'm happy to take questions, Leader. But not to move the report.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Geoff. You know, this is a huge change for us and has potential big impact on us. It's not just about putting infrastructure in ahead, which in principle, I don't disagree with the point of that. But it is at our cost and dependent on the ability also to actually be able to borrow that against a number of other things that we need to do. Not least, we also need to provide schools as well as the general infrastructure around, you know, putting in, you know, those known things that we need to put in, like roads and highways and cycleways and all the rest of it. You know, we have our own programme as well as developers' programmes. And I'm just a bit concerned about that. And the numbers, the housing numbers, has been an issue that is of concern, not least by us, but by many others. So I know we have got Keith Condekor, so shall I start with him? I see no other hands at the moment.
Thank you, Chair. The seminar to members was very, very useful. It particularly explained about the new targets, which bizarrely for Nun Eaton and Bedworth are actually going to be reduction in targets. The original target was about 400 to 500 per year from our borough plan, to which we had 200 a year added as the 4,000 of Coventry. That goes under the new scheme, I understand. We then had a new government method of calculating targets, which gave us a 460 annual target. The borough plan came in at 704 a year. And now the so-called crazy government target, where they add 30% of the number they think of, is actually less than we've got in the borough. So I am concerned if the county council's going to push it up higher because we have serious viability issues in Nun Eaton. You know, the property prices are low. We don't have the infrastructure in terms of sustainable transport and those things. So there is a big issue about numbers and how they're apportionated, apportioned. So I don't want us to complain and get more pushed on to Nun Eaton. We are really straining the schools, GPs, et cetera. So I hope you take that on board. I know your numbers are ridiculously high now in the south of the county as well.
And north Warwickshire.
But yeah, we do need some sanity here. And we also aren't going to have the population growth, Covid, Brit exit, all the things that are going to mean we're going to be in a period of lower growth for a couple of years till we recover or maybe a couple of decades, who knows? Yeah, we do need to rebase the numbers on reality. Thank you.
And yes, and the irony is that although Nun Eaton is going down, Stratford District and North Warwickshire all increased considerably. And I don't see through this how that fits in an overlay of an economic plan. So what you're doing is confining people to their cars, to commuting. And that does not seem to me, in this day and age, having talked about climate change, a positive thing to do.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this report. It's a very informative report. That's why our welcome is appearing, the kind of amendment to the recommendations where we put this on the webpage and also distribute it amongst the districts and boroughs. Because I think, one, it kind of explains an awful lot between the relationship between districts, boroughs and ourselves in terms of the planning and the infrastructure provided to those planning decisions. The reason why I'm kind of very speaking really is I kind of welcome, we're overdue for reform of the planning policy. And I think Covid-19 in itself has also basically emphasised that we need a more streamlined planning process. I'm not going to talk too much about the housing side of it, but in terms of that kind of places and employment. And as we talk about the future where we're kind of working from home, less office space needed, we're going to need to be flexible in terms of where we put, when and how. So when it comes to kind of changing those allocations of this is employment area for shops or and it's category B1 or B2 or B15, then we can change it easily. But at the moment, you have to demonstrate that you're kind of a long process of demonstrating that there is no need for that particular category. I think we need to be very flexible and speedy in our ability to kind of move things around in our town centres and our places of employment. So I'm welcoming, kind of looking forward to a speeding up of the planning process. Also, the existing planning process plays into the hands of the big house builders and disadvantages those smaller guys who want to get into building houses. The planning process is expensive, lengthy, requires a lot of expensive lawyers. When the principals are already laid out in a local plan, why should they go through kind of thousands and thousands and pounds worth of consultation on various things when the principal is already there? And I think it would kind of break that monopoly that the nine big house builders have got and give a chance to the small guys. And we get a more diverse, proactive building industry, which will also look at alternative ways of building. So I welcome a change in the planning laws. But I also see that the comments back to on this consultation are very apt. And also the things about SIL and L where the funding goes, I think are very apt as well. Because someone has got to find the money when they build these houses to build the infrastructure. Thank you.
Yeah. Geoff, no more hands, so it's back to you.
Thank you, Leader. Do appreciate the frustrations and all the comments that have been made. I will move the recommendations with that additional recommendation. At three, that the chief executive be asked to share the council's response with the district and borough councils. And thank you very much, Paul, for putting that back up on the screen and published on the county council's website. So I'll move those recommendations that are on the screen now, Chair, with their inclusion. And I hope members can support it.
Fine, and people are voting with their hands at the moment. So, yep, that's agreed and thank you. So we have unanimous agreement for that. And thank you all very much. So I'm just, that is the end of our public items. So I'm now going to just move the motion that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. And I would ask that we agree to move that motion. And if we could vote now? Thank you. I've got seven, eight, nine, there we are. Okay, we have agreement to do that. Thank you, that's unanimous again.